It might not be on yet because they have the.
Well, look, there's nobody there.
Yeah, there's nobody there yet. Everybody's late.
Oh, you clicked on a thing for.
Yeah, six participants. Okay, so Mark Phillips is on it.
Yeah, you can bear it. Click on this. Let's make that bigger. How do you make that?
Oh, Ben's on it. You can't make it bigger.
No.
I think it's just.
Turn off the.
You could turn off this.
Yeah.
Oh, wait. No, we can't make it big.
No.
Yeah, I think it's just.
Oh, once they.
Well, I think what they.
Once they post that.
I think what they wanted was to, when they're introducing themselves, they want the camera to be on them. Um, like it's not.
Sure, I mean, I don't.
But I think they expected to go individually to each one, but we don't have those.
Oh.
capabilities. We're not like at the Capitol.
Like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what they're expecting, but they're not going to get it. They probably just didn't get something like this and the cameras fixed at the top of the ceiling.
Can you turn that off right now? If you've turned off the attached, you know.
Amanda, Amanda, you're not muted.
Good morning, everyone. If you would please take your seats, we're going to try to go ahead and get started. Few announcements. We asked that everyone please silence your cell phones. If you wish to take a call, please step outside of the meeting room. Today's Monday, December 1st. It is ten oh one in the morning. My apologies. We're a minute tardy. We're here to review the highway construction priorities for District 58, which encompasses Caldwell, Catahoula, Concordia, Franklin, La Salle, and Tensaw parishes. My name is Ryan Boryak. I'm the chairman of the House Transportation Committee, and I represent District 47, which includes half of Vermillion Parish, all of Cameron Parish, and a portion of Calcasieu Parish. This morning, we have Senator Price on behalf of the Senate Transportation Committee, as well as Representative Tarver and Representative Moore on behalf of the House Transportation Committee. We have any local government officials in the audience? Wanted just to acknowledge you if you were here. As I mentioned earlier, we're here to hear from the public. It's important that we hear your positions on the Highway Priority Program. That is the whole point of us traveling the state over the next two weeks to get your input on where we are and where we hope to be going at some point. This morning, I asked that you be patient with us. We have new staff members on our committee. The Senate staff is pretty seasoned, but on the House side, we have some new House committee members, and so they don't have a lot to work with with me, so just be patient with all of us. And with that, speaking of new individuals, I'm going to turn it over to Secretary Leday to make an introductory comment and get us kicked off. Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the committee, appreciate y'all being here today. Excited to kick off our Highway Priority Program. As you know, this is my first rodeo here in roadshow, so excited to kick this off. Before we jump into it, you know, just want to acknowledge we've got members of really every branch of DOTD here, as well as the district. A couple of those will have a moment to speak before I go through the actual Highway Priority Program presentation, but just want to really acknowledge the hard work that they put into this and the hard work that we will put in over the next year as we finalize this. But really, just excited today. As you know, we're in the midst of a transformation, an exciting way to help transform DOTD and the state. And so we're going to highlight some of those changes today as well as over the course of this next year. So just really excited to kick this off. Excited to look at the investment that we have in transportation in the state of Louisiana today as we go through not only the process, but the projects that are part of this FY 2026, 2027 plan. And so with that, I'll kind of just go do an overview, Chairman, of the of the presentation. Obviously, we've got the overview of the process that we go through. We've got really the identification process and all the things that I'll go through in the HPP presentation. But before I do, you know, introductions, I want to call up our new Assistant Secretary of Project Delivery, Eric Dofanay. He's going to go over some of the improvements to Project Delivery that we expect to see in this next year in DOTD through this transformation and really highlight some of the hard work that we've been putting in over the last three to four months. And then we'll call up our DA, Lee Wallace, as he talks to you a little bit about the work that's going on here at District 58 and some of the critical projects before we jump into this HPP. And so excited to do that. So with that, I'm gonna call up Eric. Eric, would you come up?
All right, it's good. All right, thanks. Good morning.
Good morning.
Eric Dofanay, new Assistant Secretary of Project Delivery for DOTD. At first, I want to thank everyone for attending. These public hearings are instrumental parts of our project prioritization and selection process, as you know. While these are official hearings, we also like, we also take and like feedback throughout the year. So just please feel free to reach out to the district administrators or myself throughout the year with any questions, concerns, input that y'all may have. That will help us prioritize needs, right? Feedback for these meetings, feedback from legislators, local officials, and the public are key parts of the project selection process, along with other factors such as existing conditions, average daily traffic, safety concerns, maintenance costs, economic development, et cetera. We do utilize this feedback that we receive throughout the year to develop projects that are important to the people that we serve. As y'all are aware, legislation last year created the Office of Transformation and the Office of Project Delivery. Both offices aim at enhancing efficiency, effectiveness, and accountability within DOTD. Since then, we have launched new initiatives to modernize our internal processes. With respect to Project Delivery, we are evaluating and streamlining our entire process, including project prioritization, an updated project delivery framework, task and responsibility oriented project management, a new project reporting system for transparency, and even contract administration and construction phase consistency. Essentially, our goal is to, number one, clearly define project priorities. Number two, establish a five-year living fiscally constrained highway priority program, along with ideas on how to fund and resource those projects. And then number three, reform our project management and delivery process to provide for more accountability and consistency from project inception to construction. Another huge effort that we're undergoing right now is with communication of the Highway Priority Program. Right? Secretary and I reaching out to everyone and trying to communicate things better than we have in the past, right? Communicating priorities, the risk associated with project development, challenges, and opportunities will foster more trust and collaboration amongst all stakeholders needed to deliver our critical infrastructure. Aside from internal process enhancements, another key component in the formula, perhaps some will argue the biggest component, is funding, right? DOTD has historically allocated all federal and state funding dollars each fiscal year. However, in the past couple of years, the addition of dollars through the Louisiana Transportation Infrastructure Fund has helped deliver, excuse me, an additional hundred projects totaling over $530 million in roadway preservation projects alone. Sixty-two of these projects in 2024 were all delivered on time, and another thirty-seven projects this fiscal year that are currently ahead or, I mean, on schedule are ahead of schedule. So the continuation of these efforts will truly help deliver and advance, excuse me, essential infrastructure improvement and address a growing backlog of needs. I'd like to thank you legislators for the trust, for the commitment in DOTD. And also like to thank the districts, design offices, construction offices in their body there for taking on the challenge and delivering those additional projects. The combined effort of all of us is making a difference. With that, I'd like to introduce the DA for District 58, Mr. Lee Wallace.
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, committee. I guess first I'd like to introduce my district staff that I have here with me for anybody in the public. If you'd stand up, I have David Dupree, our ADA of Engineering, Ms. Bridget Mappus, our ADA of Operations, and Ms. Callie Harrell, our Traffic Engineer.
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Lee Wallace. I am the District Administrator for District 58. Got ahead of myself. So I was here, I was asked just to give you guys a brief update on critical projects for the district and also kind of recap and go with our future plans for the LTIF funding that you guys as the committee and legislators were gracious enough to give us the last two, or last year and this year. Just a little information. So we have approximately a little over 3,000 lane miles here in the district. We maintain over 600 bridges. You know, the full gamut of maintenance activities right away, maintenance, we maintain mow, litter pickup for approximately 10,000 acres annually. So we for last year's LTIF, for anybody in the public that doesn't know, we received 7.5 million per district. We were able to spend almost to the dollar that entire amount to allocate that out on project, on in-house material, outside contracts. We got a lot of work accomplished with that. Our split on in-house material, we spent approximately 3.6 million, and in-house contracts, 3.9 million. So we were close to a 50-50 split on materials and contracts. Of those contracts, we let six letter bid projects and paid for one additional mowing cycle that we wouldn't have been able to pay for otherwise. Those projects included two tree removal contracts due to a pine beetle infestation that we've had here in the region. We removed almost 1,000 dead pine trees from the state right away under those two contracts. We did a district-wide race pavement marker project for all six parishes. We did a Portland cement concrete patching project on US 165 and US 84 in Caldwell and Concordia Parish. We did a short overlay on LA 4, and we completed a intersection safety improvement project for the city of Ala. We added two additional turn lanes, upgraded stop signs, put some delineators. That was a problem intersection that had been brought to us a couple of times in public meetings, and we were able, through that funding, was able to get a project out and constructed for that. On the in-house side, we, excuse me, we spent $746,000 in striping material. That's paints, beads, thermo. That allowed us to update striping for a little over 1,200 lane miles. Our general goal is to update our striping in at least three of our parishes yearly, so that way we're on a two-year cycle for updating striping. We spent approximately $96,000 for additional herbicide for Johnson grass mitigation, trying to get ahead of that issue on some of our routes. We spent a little over $100,000 on some pipe and RCB boxes that, for two separate replacements. We spent $350,000 for asphaltic surface treatments on our chip seal program. That's been a really good enhancement to our long-term maintenance for highways. And then we spent 2.2 million in hot mix, asphalted overlays, patches across all six parishes, which was approximately 19,000 tons of hot mix. One other small thing we were able to do with this, there was, you know, a really good benefit to the district here locally that historically we just wouldn't have had funding for was we were able to do a short road realignment on LA 559. We had an instance where the rivers trying to cut into a roadway. That road leads to our ferry, duty ferry, which, as you know, it only runs 12 hours a day. So if the road would have slid in, you know, we'd only had 12 hours of access. So that funding was essential for keeping that roadway in place. Looking forward to this year, this 25-26 year, we received $7 million. We have in process to let two additional tree removal projects. This is to take care of any additional pine beetle trees that we have and do a few spot removals on some safety sensitive trees on our right away. We're doing a concrete patching and joint repair project on US 65. That'll encompass almost a 40-mile section, very isolated patching and joint repairs. And then we have two micro-surfacing projects planned on US 84 and LA 130. I have two somewhat critical projects that I just want to update you guys and the public. Our LA 506 Bridge Replacement Project, that's kind of been a thorn in our side the last couple of years. We were able to get emergency funding through the Secretary's Emergency Fund to, and do a force account to complete that project. It has now been finalized and done. And then our LA 3102 Larto Acro Bridge Project is being completed as we speak. For you're aware, that was a temporary replacement bridge that the district staff and statewide staff installed in order to maintain access in case of bridge closure. We have pretty much the same plan going forward this year as far as the in-house side of the, on the maintenance funding. We're going to try to do striping for three parishes, expand our Johnson grass mitigation plan. We're looking at doing approximately 60 miles of chip seals again, our in-house forces, and somewhere in the range of 16,000 to 18,000 tons of hot mix. So that kind of conclude, or kind of gives you a brief overview kind of of our maintenance activities. And with that being said, I want to welcome up Secretary Leday to go over the HPP program.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Wallace, if you don't mind, Chairman, I'm going to reposition it and get started here. Position this real quick. We can look at on the PowerPoint. Are you? Hopefully everybody can hear me. Well, again, appreciate that overview from Lee on the district. Obviously, wanted to highlight both some of the ongoing activities in the district. Also, we had a slide there just showcasing the investment on the operational side. Annually, I'm not sure that this is, this is working. Hold on one second. Wanted to thank you for the amount of funding that you provided through LTIF for both the last two fiscal years. Obviously, this work is critical to every district, and so you'll see this across every district as we go on this roadshow, but the work that we do on the maintenance and operations side is critical to preserving our system. And so this is just some statistics of that investment that you'll see in every district. In addition to some videos of some critical work that goes on in every district, we've got here the Larto project showcasing that temporary bypass of that, that bridge work that we're doing there. And so we've got some great videos to showcase in every district as we go around the state. So I just wanted to showcase that. In addition, we have a new guidebook here for our Highway Priority Program. We've got this here at every district, so we'll be giving this out to the public. You've got one there at your seat. But this showcases kind of that transformation initiative for communication and transparency, so we can better communicate what goes into this process and then that investment every year. So certainly take a look at that, and we'll be reflecting on that towards the end. So as we get started today, really, it's, you know, really about three things. Wanted to give you an overview of the Highway Priority Program. A lot of what you hear every year in terms of the overview of this annual investment program, that project selection process, what do we go through every year to get to this point? And then finally, what does that investment look like? And then touch on those projects in this district, in District 58. And so with that, want to just kick it off. And so as you see there, you know, this is really that prioritized plan for transportation improvements across the state. It outlines all road and bridge projects that will be funded and scheduled. And so a lot of times what we think about is really that investment in really funded projects for construction. And so this is really a major part of this document. It guides all of our decisions on pavement, bridge repairs, and new interchanges throughout the state, and of course identifies those projects for construction, but also touches on those both in the pre-construction process in planning and design. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is really ensure that taxpayer dollars are invested effectively in projects that deliver the greatest public benefit. And so with that, you'll really look at five main goals and objectives in this Highway Priority Program. And so the first is really preserving this system of 17,000 miles of roadway and 13,000 bridges across the state, really bringing the state's highway system into a good state of repair to optimize the usage and efficacy of existing transportation facilities. And so that's really when we talk about preservation, that's really the heart of it. Of course, we have to operate the system, support the resiliency of the transportation system, encourage innovation and technology through this process. And this does include effective evacuation routes in that category to operating the system. Of course, improving the safety of the system is critical. This is actually one of the priority goals and objectives for the nation, for ASHTO and the new Federal Highway and Road Administration. Of course, improving safety for motorized and non-motorized highway users and communities is always important. We want to expand the system, increase the accessibility for people, goods, and services, and foster economic development in that process. And then finally, it's all about improving the quality of life for our citizens across the state. And so those are the five goals and objectives of our program. When we look at the organization of it and the types of projects, it's really broken up into something similar. You've got your preservation side where we're repairing and rehabilitating existing roadways and bridges. That work typically includes pavement overlays, patching and bridge maintenance to bring that to a good state of repair. You've got the capacity side where we're adding capacity, essentially adding lanes to improve traffic flow, widening projects, new interchanges, and those types of improvements are this category. We've got the operations and motor services category where we're focusing on improving the reliability of the system. You're talking about traffic signal upgrades, lighting, drainage repairs, ITS, intelligent transportation systems, and other enhancements. And then you've got a miscellaneous category where a lot of items that don't fall into these, such as smaller repairs, road transfers, other specialized work, and then finally, safety, where those projects where we're reducing crashes, improving travel for all roadway users, including intersections, improvements, guardrail and upgrades, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, as well as the installation of roundabouts. And so that is really the five types of projects that you'll see in that breakdown of investment. And then finally, the program organization is really the three categories or stages of these projects that you'll see in that booklet. The first is really the thing that we focus a lot on is the projects that are scheduled for letting. And so that is really that construction category where we're getting projects to the letting so we can award these projects in this fiscal year in FY 26, 27. We do have projects that are in development in that pre-construction stage where they're doing the environmental work, the planning of the concepts, as well as getting those engineering plans ready so that we can get to construction. And then finally, projects that are awaiting funding that have some type of concept or engineering developed, and we're trying to get federal or state funds to build those. And so when we look at what's in this booklet, it's primarily these three categories of projects. And so when we start this process every year, it's obviously about identifying projects and then selecting projects that will be funded, and then other projects would be funded for future FY Highway Priority Programs. And so wanted to go over an overview as we jump into this of what we're looking at. And so as we start this process, you're really looking at really eight, eight things that we're identifying. A lot of those were part of those goals and objectives. This is part of that revised statute 229.1. And so you'll see a lot of similarities here between the goals and objectives and the types of projects. That's one through eight where we're bringing a highway system into a good state of repair, improving safety, supporting the resiliency in transportation systems, increasing accessibility, economic development, intermodal connectivity, innovation and use of technology, and then protection of the environment. And so when we break that down and look how it actually influences each of those five goals, you can see how those eight categories in our revised statute influences those goals and objectives. And so we are accomplishing that by following this process. And so really, when we sit back and look at the process, it really starts through this flow chart here. And so we are identifying projects and then recommending them into a Highway Priority Program. That program gets submitted to the Joint Transportation Committee every year on October 1st. And then we come to meetings just like this to hold the roadshow where we go over this program with you and the public, and then ultimately get feedback on that, and then make final decisions on the approval through the legislative session with both the House and Senate Transportation Committees through the full legislature. And so you see this process there is the process that we're following, and we are right there where we're holding public hearings throughout the state for the Highway Priority Program. And so before we really talk about that investment, really want to showcase how these projects are identified and recommended for this plan. And so much like you see every year, we at the department work with all of you in the public and the legislature to gather and analyze data, look at the roadway conditions, look at the operations of these highways and bridges, look at safety and congestion, and then seek stakeholder input on all of this, whether it's through the public, through state and local officials, through MPOs, metropolitan planning organizations, through our rural consultation, through regional local planning officials, federal agencies, and other state agencies, getting the stakeholder input on all of the data we have, as well as the various projects that have concepts developed. Through this process, as those projects are identified, looking at ways to prioritize and select them, obviously working with our districts and MPOs on the technical analysis on all of these projects, getting stakeholder input. on all of these projects, getting stakeholder input, as well as working with the selection teams to make final selections through district recommendations, through technical analysis, stakeholder input, evaluating the impacts to our state's long-range transportation plan, and then also obviously available funding. And so with that, you've got a number of factors we just want to highlight that are often considered as we look at this process. Of course, the condition of the roadway and the structure and the drainage is always obviously critical, looking at, you know, what the condition of that roadway is in and how much longer it's going to last, looking at that immediate need for improvement or for reconstruction due to unforeseeable emergencies. You've obviously got the type and volume of traffic that these roadway and bridge infrastructures receive, the population growth within each parish and segment of the state, of course, safety, looking at, at crash records, looking at the economic development potential, and then finally, any challenges that the project will have, whether it's through engineering or right of way or others, and then of course, looking at evacuation routes for different emergencies. And so those are obviously some of those factors through this process that are often considered. And of course, working with our, our project selection teams, DOTD headquarters, leadership, our district officials, and obviously, representation from both the legislature, from the state, as well as other local and private sector associations as we make these decisions. And so as I mentioned, in this process, this is where we are holding the, the public hearings throughout the state for this highway priority program. And so excited to kick that off here in District 58 today. And so with that, you know, ultimately, what we come to is, is our investment. And so in fiscal year 2026, 27, as you look at what was delivered to Joint Transportation on October 1st, that's in this book, is the $1.2 billion investment in our state's highway infrastructure this year. It's roughly 302 projects. It encompasses $913 million that are allocated for construction. So when you look across those buckets, you can see in this pie chart, you've got a majority of that in that preservation category that we talked about, roughly $553 million. You've got another $101 million in operations. You've got $74 million in safety, and then 185 in the miscellaneous projects that includes a variety of different types of projects. And then within that, obviously, 220 million is for pre-construction so that we can continue to advance these projects to construction. And then another 70 million is in contingency, as well as engineering and inspection to actually build these projects. And so that encompasses that $1.2 billion investment. And again, that's $913 million allocated for construction. Within each of these categories, just wanted to highlight some of the, the system that is going on. And so you've got, again, that preservation side, which is your biggest bucket this year, 553 million. And so you have both interstate and non-interstate preservation, some that's on the federal non-highway, national highway system, some that's non-federal aid. You've got roadway preventative maintenance, and then you have both the bridge on system and off system preservation. And so that encompasses that $553 million bucket. Of course, on the operations and motorist side, you've got a number of categories there, and that's subpartition, sorry, I'm getting to advance the slides there. So that was the system preservation, both non-interstate, interstate, as well as bridge, on system and off system. And then you have the operations motorist services. And so that is ITS, intelligence traffic systems, and traffic control devices are a huge component of that. We've got the roadway flooding portion, the protect funding that we got from the federal, federal system, waste stations, transportation systems management, interstate lighting, rest areas, access management, of course, ferries, and major repairs are part of this category as well, movable bridge maintenance, and then the ADA program is all part of that operations and motorist services. And then within that safety bucket, you're really looking at two subcategories, the highway safety program, which includes some of those guardrail repairs and other safety measures that are part of this, that's 61.6 million. And then railroad crossing upgrades and separations, part of that 12.1 million, that includes the total for that $74 million category. And then finally, the miscellaneous category, you've got the TAP projects, transportation alternative projects, you've got a number of urban system upgrades there listed that encompasses that, that $103 million bucket. You've got the electric vehicle, federal program, the NEVI program, 16.1 million that we got from FHWA. You have federal earmarks, you've got intermodal connector, and then the roadway transfer portion of that miscellaneous category as well. And of course, within this, we have, within this entire program, we've got projects for each district, in District 58 here in Chase, we've got 11 projects amongst the seven parishes within this, within this district. And so a portion of those, Lee mentioned some of those that are being constructed as we talk about now, but a whole new really bucket of projects that we're excited to roll out in this, in this highway priority program. And of course, we've got really a number of ways that you can learn more about the system. Obviously, the, the new booklet that we have, the guidebook, highlights that. We've got QR code there where you can access the full HPP and a link to the website and provide comments online. And so excited to kind of roll out some of the new communication tools that we have as part of this highway priority program. And then finally, obviously, the public comment, public comment is critical component of this effort. And so eager to get the public's feedback, obviously, throughout the year, but also through this process. And so we can share those comments again on our website, but also here today. And I know I'll turn it over to the chairman for that. Before I do that, Chairman, just want to highlight the continuation of our DOTD's transformation process. Obviously, Eric touched on some of the project delivery efforts. We have the new Office of Highway, of Transformation that, that our Deputy Secretary, Mr. Julie Cormier, is leading. And so a lot of these efforts that you see in the communication and transparency of this today, as well as the improvements that we'll make over the course of this next year are part of that. So we're, we're really excited to get started on that and have been working hard over the last four months. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chairman. Take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. On behalf of the committee, I first want to thank Mr. Wallace and the efforts of, of your team here in the district, both the design professionals, as well as the, the operations and maintenance crews that are out there getting work done on behalf of your district. If, if I could assign some homework to, to Assistant Secretary Dauphine, if, we, we clearly have heard today in Mr. Wallace's presentation about the importance of the seven and a half million from the previous fiscal year and this year's seven million. I, I think we can all acknowledge that there's, there's quite a bit of work that's being done with those maintenance fund appropriations. If, if there is a running list of issues, which is going to only make it harder on us as legislators, but if the district is aware of equipment needs and other operational needs that exceed $7 million, I mean, let's, let's, let's be honest, you know, it's always a fiscally constrained budget and project and, you know, maintenance plan. But, but if we have an idea of what those needs are, and, and let's say we can't get there, at least to know what we are not meeting in each fiscal year from a maintenance, it doesn't have to be all of it. I don't need to know every sign. But I think generally, if, if there's a pothole patcher that's needed, if there's a paver that's needed in a district, if the district has one paver that's 30 years old, and you feel that you can handle more projects in-house with forced account labor with another paver, I, I think it's important for us as a committee to know what those unmet needs are, even if we can't, you know, appropriate funds. I think it's still, it's still good for us to have that goal to, to try to provide as many improvements as we possibly can. So I, I would, I would ask that Mr. Dauphine can work with the, the DAs and, and understand what those maybe equipment and general maintenance needs are for that district. And I imagine that they probably are similar from one part of the state to the other. But I, I think that helps us as a committee when we go through the budget and appropriations process. Also, as it relates to the highway priority program itself, and we talk about public comment, each year, we, we travel the state, and, and I know, again, we have fiscal constraints on what is actually included in the eventual highway priority program for that year. However, I do think it's important for the committee to also see those unmet needs as it relates to projects that are submitted to this process from the public. I know we, Ms. Elliott, I know tracks what is submitted throughout this process. I think it's important for the Joint Transportation Committee to also see those projects that were prioritized by the public that just maybe didn't make it into this iteration of the plan, of the program. And so I, I think having that list of, of roads, bridges, and, and general needs that were submitted through the public comment process across the state, that we're provided with a, with a summary of maybe what didn't meet, you know, make the cut just this round. We, we talk about economic development a lot. I, I know in one of our efforts, we, we discussed coordination with LED. I, I think it's important for us as we move forward to adopting the plan, for the committee to understand how economic development priorities and, and prospective needs are impacting the highway priority program, how they're fashioning and shaping, and maybe maneuvering their way in, into the plan. Not for today, but I think in, in a very proactive manner, I think it's good for us to understand those, those infrastructure improvements. And I'm going to get off of that. Committee members? Any? Representative Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to, first of all, thank all of you all for being here, especially the staff. And I'm not sure who's here from public, from the public, but I certainly want to hear from you. When I'm traveling to and from Baton Rouge, of course, this is the route that I take. So it's important, and in the bridge that I cross and all of that, it's important that we make sure that it's safe, all our roads are. And again, I just want to thank you. And we're going to all be working, try to get additional dollars. At least I like what the chairman said about unmet needs. We do want to know about those needs. So again, thank you, each and every one of you all.
Thank you, Representative Moore.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just one comment to you, and certainly agree, we will, I know Eric and, and Mary and others will work hard to fulfill that, and I think you're right. I think across the state, I, I would like to highlight, we always have unmet needs, both on the mowing, litter pickup side, as we try to beautify the state, as well as really in, in urban and suburban areas in traffic signals. And so that work continues, obviously, to, to increase in price. And so providing any additional dollars there would be beneficial as we really operate those systems. So appreciate your willingness to, to let us really compile that information and provide it to you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, now, thank you, Mr. Secretary. We'll get into the most important part of, of the agenda, public comment. When I call your name, I ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name for the record, and then let us hear your thoughts. First up, we have Mr. Tim Lassiter.
Thank y'all for giving us time to voice our comments. My name is Tim Lassiter. I'm living in La Salle Parish. I'm here representing La Salle Parish in District 3, which takes part of Northwest La Salle Parish, US 84. And that is part of my concern. I have worked over the years with, with Lee on several projects. I commend him on one and all, they have did a good job on that. In the past years, tell us, we have encountered a J-turn, railroad overpass, and now the new project is right, right down there on the parish line, some new bridge is going to be put in. I'm here, I guess, wanting some information on the railroad overpass, but also on the new project. The railroad overpass, which I'm sure Lee can fill you in on it right there, has been an ongoing project for several years. And everybody in La Salle Parish that goes west is very concerned about the, the timeline that we're facing on this road. We have a temporary bridge in now, which is better. But then my, my other concern is on the, the bridges and relief bridges on the parish line, which, which crosses over Castor Creek. They contacted us, the state did, I think last week, before last, on purchasing, starting to purchase property for, for the new project. I guess my, my fear is I hope it doesn't turn into what our overpass is turning, because our business is located in between those two bridges. And it, it does cause some part of a, a problem. And I guess that's my main concern this morning.
Mr. Wallace? Just.
So the, you've already been. I didn't, Lee Wallace. So the, the two new bridges there, the relief bridge, Cash Creek, those are going to be off alignment. So those are coming, I think they're scheduled to let next year, year after. They'll be off alignment bridges, so the whole new bridge will be built, you know, to the north side, which is why you got contacted about the property. So you shouldn't see any kind of disruption. The plan is to maintain the existing bridges in place as is now, so there shouldn't be, you know, other than construction, little bit of construction impact as far as, there shouldn't be any kind of, you know, detour type issues with the new construction. The existing railroad overpass bridge has been let contractor, basically, and I, one of my staff may correct me if I'm wrong, we are basically in the, or I say we, the contractor is in the process of trying to get their construction plans passed through the railroad. So the bridge plans are done, they have to submit basically how they're going to assemble or build a bridge over the railroad. And at this point, I think that's been almost a year process that they're ongoing, back and forth with some middles to and from the railroad. And so essentially, that, that project, you know, is essentially waiting on railroad approval for the construction of the bridge itself, as far as how they're going to move pieces, how they're going to assemble, what cranes, everything detail-wise for that.
We don't have a timeline or nothing.
It's, I think they're on about some middle number six right now, so I'm hoping that that is getting close to starting actual construction. But again, on it, the plan is the temporary bridge is in place, we're maintaining it as an exit, you know, it's no load posting, it's, but the plan is to leave it in place, maintain it, open the traffic until the new bridge is completed. So no plans of taking anything out on the temporary. Hopefully, that'll alleviate most of your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. There's no way they all go that smooth. At least they didn't in the districts where I come from, I can tell you that. Donald Money? Is it, did I get that last name right? Okay. That's good. I'm just.
If I'm Donald Money, I'm not Donald Trump.
There you go.
But anyway, tell you a little bit about myself.
Please introduce yourself for the record. I'm sorry I have to do it. Introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Donald Money. I live at 363 Alexander Road, Clayton, Louisiana is the mailing address. I actually live in a little community called Cash By. My question and my comment today is about a three and a half mile stretch of road that joins 921 to Tensaw Road. This stretch of road, I've, I've lived up there since 78. I've been familiar with that country. I married a girl from Cash By in 74. So it's better than 50 years I've lived in that area. There's a three and a half mile stretch of. There's a three and a half mile stretch of 921 that goes from Maitland to a little end maintenance sign. I really think that end maintenance sign's in the wrong place. I think it'll stop right there at Maitland. Because for over 50 years, that stretch of road has not been overlaid or redone. 921 that joint, that takes off from 567, which turns west off of 425, coming from Clayton to Sicily Island, has been redone not once, not twice, but three times in that time span. I think the first time that they, they did it, and I'm thankful for that. That's wonderful. It needed it. It's a very well-used thoroughfare, and it needed it. But I think it, there was some little flaw in it. They had to come back and redo it. This was back, oh, 20 years ago, maybe. But they just redid it. But they have neglected this piece of road that, that goes from Maitland to the west, south and west. It's three and a half miles. There's a bridge on it, and they redid the bridge a few years ago. And while they were doing it, I joked with them. And I said, why don't y'all build a road to the thing first? Because it's, it's deplorable. And I teach school, and I teach civics. So I know a little bit about government. I'm not real familiar with what the laws are as far as, I understand from one of my police juror members that these roads are supposed to be done every 50 years. I don't know if that's true or not. This one is long overdue. And there, the last time I checked, there are in excess of 30 families that live between Maitland and, you know, it goes on out. You can go on out to Highway 8 to Harrisonburg and, and go that way. But there, there are trucks, cars, farm vehicles, oil tankers, log trucks, school buses, and families that travel that road every day. I, I'm not sure how you decide. I, I, I see lines put out on the road. Sometimes they count the traffic. My gripe with that, though, is most of the time when I see them, it's in like October, you know, when the farming has, has pretty much finished. And you may have a school bus or two, but there's not a lot of school traffic. Or in, in June, I've noticed them put counters out in June, pretty much. The school traffic is not going on. So I don't know about all of that. But I'm, my, my question is, and my comment is on KNOE News. Give me just a second here. I'm old and blind and deaf. But in October the 7th, 2024, last year, the DOT supposedly dispersed $67.5 million for road repair. Bill Cassidy, who is our US Congressman, our Senator, got, supposedly got, this was announced by KNOE News, $5.9 billion for infrastructure. Now, I don't know where the, where the, who decides and where the money ran out. But we've not done anything to that piece of road that joins Tensaw Road, which is a parish road. And my, from my observation, I, I think the parish would probably step up, because I, I feel like, and I, they've heard it from me, trust me, about our roads, like Tensaw Road. But I think the deal is, that end maintenance sign that I spoke to you about a minute ago, I think the parish kind of feels like the end of the maintenance for everything ends there. But it doesn't, it, it actually ends back up, three and a half miles up the road, where 567 turns into 921 and goes back to 425. But I'm just here, and I appreciate y'all having this meeting. I was made aware of it by my school board member. And I, I appreciate you letting me come today as a representative of that Cash By community. They're good Christian people. They don't raise a lot of sand. But I think they've been neglected. And I'm here this morning to speak up for those 35 or 40 families and farms and the people and the children that had to travel those roads on a school bus or whatever. And I, I'm, I'm, I don't know if you're aware or not, the school that I was at last year, Sicily Island High, closed. And those kids had to travel to Harrisonburg now. I feel like that's an extra burden. This isn't the first time I've spoke out, spoken out for this, this road. I've talked to my Senator. I've, I've written a letter to Julia Letlow and expressed to her, you know, my concerns. She's advised me to talk to Glenn Womack, Neil Reiser, and I've spoken to them. But so far, what we're, we're traveling on a road looks like something out of Sarajevo, quite honestly. It's horrible. And I do appreciate y'all allowing me to come today and comment and at least get it out there for you. And it, as you've got my address, I'll give you my phone number, Anything I can do to help, let me know, and I'll be, I'll be glad to do what I can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming and, and having this, this meeting.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Leslie Durham?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members. Secretary, I'm just tickled to death that y'all came to North Louisiana. We are not Arkansas. Now, you can see that. Please come back. Ms. Pat, I know you get tired of telling them that. But thank you for the opportunity. I'm just going to make a statement, and I think the timing is perfect.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
I am on my way. I'm from North, we take a little bit of time. We, it, you have to give us a minute, okay?
You saw him come out.
I know, I know.
And it wasn't to get the comment cards.
He's seen me before, so he knew, he knew. It's, we're just, you know, Francis Thompson's not here, but you understand, this is where we are, okay? Leslie Durham, I'm from Tensaw Parish. I'm the Executive Director of the Louisiana Infrastructure Technical Assistance Corporation. It's a nonprofit that you all funded for infrastructure. And just real quickly, in the past two years, we've been able to assist local governments with infrastructure grants in the tune of $300 million throughout the state. We provide technical assistance, grant writing, and we also have matching funds, which you all provided, to assist rural communities with those applications in the bipartisan infrastructure bill. So one thing that I wanted to, to say, to make sure that Mr. Secretary was aware, that this resource is available. So I imagine that you're going to come up on individuals throughout this roadshow that maybe don't understand the difference between local and state roads. And what we can do is help with the local part. So, and we are very proud that you all have Greg Cormier, Cormio, Cormier with, with you. We're, we work very well with him and with the Governor's Office of Rural Development to make sure that all of these projects flow properly. In, in my previous lives, I worked for the federal government and, and the state government. So I understand the importance of making sure that we're all on the same team when we are looking at these one-time dollars in these big projects. So I wanted to thank you again for the opportunity and make sure that you are aware that we are helping with the locals on their roads and bridges. And if you have questions from locals that do not pertain to the state, we are a resource for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durham. I believe that concludes our public comment. Did we miss anyone? Okay. On behalf of, of the committee members, I want to thank you all for your attendance here today. We, this, this is our first of many meetings that we will pursue across the state. But this is, this is critically important for us to come to you in, in your home parish or home districts to hear from you. We realize not everyone can come to Baton Rouge. So with that, members, anything? We stand adjourned. Thank you.